Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision Special Program. I'm Ben Hale, joined today by Mesa Olson, who is running for Blaine City Council in Ward Three in the primary election on August 9th. There's four candidates running for this open seat, and we're happy to sit down with you today Mesa. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Well, let's just start. I want to give you a chance to introduce yourself to the voters and then explain why you decided to run for this office.
Sure. Well, my name is Mesa, and I am a wife, been married for almost 17 years. I have three kids, 12, 10, and eight. And I just wanted to run because I feel like it's important to have somebody who's willing to invest time to get to know what actually what the people in the city of Blaine want. I think that sometimes it's just a duty to show up and fill a seat, and I think that we're there to be a representative of what the people are actually wanting on certain decisions being made. So I'm looking forward to doing that, looking forward to getting to know more people within the city and find out what it is, what their dreams are, if you will, for the city of Blaine, what they like to see. And also, I think it's important that, you know, you have experience with setting budgets. It always comes down to money with everything. So, you know, knowing how to run things successfully, and sometimes money has to get spent, but where to spend it, where not to. So I think combining those two things is the big driving factor for me.
You mentioned doing what the people want.
Yeah.
As you've been talking to people throughout this campaign, leading up to the primary election, what are you hearing? What do you think the people of Blaine want?
Well, I've heard a lot of, you're the first person that's actually come to my door to ask me what I think, what I'd like to see for the city of Blaine. And which is interesting to me, that was sort of eye-opening, but I think that's what the role is. The role is to really get at the heart of what people want, and then to bring that to the council and sit down and sort of advocate for their desires.
If you were to be elected, how would you continue that communication with your constituents after you're in office and have to go to multiple meetings and more things on your calendar because you're elected? How would you communicate with your constituents then?
That's a great question, because you can't go door-to-door every day or on every decision that needs to be made. One thing that I look forward to doing is just putting myself out there and being reachable as well. But my experience has shown that most people don't take the time, maybe unless there's a problem. And what I'm hoping to do to communicate to people is to reach out to them and say, "Hey, we have a big decision at the table to be made, and I'd like to know how you feel about it. You know, what are you looking for? Or what would you like to see with this decision being made?" So it's more of me reaching out and not just floating by until somebody reaches out to me. So kind of a two-way thing.
Do you have goals in mind if you're elected? Things that you want to accomplish?
I don't really have an agenda, per se, because I'm just now getting out there to hear what people want to see in the city of Blaine. I love Blaine. I've enjoyed living here. We've been here for almost 14 years, I believe. So goals, I guess my goals are more of just being effective at communicating what the people in my ward would like to see. It's really not so much about me, but it's about what my role is in representing them.
Okay. As you look at the future of Blaine, what do you think is the most important thing, the most important issue for the city as it goes forward?
I feel like that is, with our great growth that we've had, which is, it's good, but with that comes additional maybe issues. And I think one of the biggest things that we're facing right now is, you know, traffic and speeds. And if you look back 40 years, where Blaine was 40 years ago compared to now, it's a big change. And I think that's one of the biggest things we're going to have to balance and figure out.
Do you have any thoughts on the Blaine proposed potential maybe community center? There's been a task force meeting, there's the potential, and it looks like there'll be a referendum on the ballot coming in November if all things fall into place. Do you have any thoughts on the community center project, for it, against it?
Well, me personally, I do, because I live here and it's my dollars being spent as well. But I guess it's more of, I haven't got a feel for what the community wants. Is that something that they're pushing for, or is that somebody's agenda? It's a big issue, and it's important to me that people get their voice heard on that. I feel like we have a lot of great space already in Blaine that could definitely, you know, be used as purpose. Our city hall has amazing spaces in it. So I have feelings on it, but my big thing is, I really want to get out there and find out what our residents want with this, because essentially, it's theirs. It's their community, it's their community center. So I'm not so much of a fighter, but I like to fight for other people's opinions, if you will, and that their voice is heard. So that's a big deal to me.
Okay. Now, if you are lucky enough to win the election, be elected, not everyone's going to vote for you.
Yep.
Hate to break it to you.
Yep.
You won't get every vote. How will you work to represent everyone, even those who don't vote for you? And how will you build some unity around yourself and unity in your ward and in the city?
That's a great question. And I kind of said it a few times, but really, I feel like everybody has a point of view and a perspective. I truly believe that most people don't set out just to be difficult, they're just trying to be heard. And when you get, I do real estate, so when we're working with a buyer and a seller, it's about bringing them together to come to a common, good place for both people. And I feel like that's kind of what this is about. It's about getting both sides, or both sides of any decision, or together to, how can we win-win for everybody? So that would be my goal, and I actually really welcome hearing both sides of a story. You know, a man's case seems right until the other presents his. And so I think that's valuable, and I welcome it. So I'm okay with that. And not everybody has to agree, but we should be able to come to a place where we can agree to move forward with something. It's compromise, just like I do with my kids.
I just want to finish up today with, pretty simple, but why should someone vote for you? What do you tell them when you see them at the door, or see them at coffee, or whatever it might be? Why should someone vote for you?
Thanks for asking that question. I believe that a vote in me is your way of getting your voice heard. It's a way to, not everybody has the time that I'm able to delegate to representing them in it. So a vote for me is essentially getting your voice heard, providing we can communicate and really seeing what it is that that resident wants for their city.
All right. Well, I want to thank you for taking some time today, coming in, letting us and the viewers get to know you just a little bit better. So thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
All right. That was Mesa Olson, candidate in Blaine City Council, Ward Three. Primary elections on August 9th. Remember to get out and vote in the primary, it is important. We'll have complete wrap-up of the primary on that night. You can follow us on our social media accounts, on Twitter and on Facebook. And North Metro TV will bring you results from the primary election that night. Leading up to it, there's more information on our website, northmetrotv.com. Candidate biographies, as well as if you wanted to watch this spotlight or any of our other interviews with candidates, they'll all be posted there on northmetrotv.com for you to look, just find the local decision tab on our website. I've been your host, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching. Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm sitting down with Al Garaki, who's running in Blaine City Council, Ward Three. And Al, thank you for being here today, first of all. And I wanted to start by giving you a chance to introduce yourself to the voters a little bit, and explain to us why you decided to run for the city council.
Okay, well, thank you, Ben. Thank you. I'm really grateful that we can be a part of the discussion here for city government going forward. And as you said, my name's Al Garaki, and I'm running for city council in Ward Three. I am a 25-year resident of the city of Blaine. My wife's lived here all her life, so I don't want to give away her age, but I just want to tell you that I love the city of Blaine. And I'm the youngest of 10 kids. I grew up in the southern metro area, and I ended up marrying a Blaine girl. And so that's why I'm up here in the city of Blaine, and I fell in love with the city. And so I raised two kids. I have two adult children. My daughter Elizabeth is 27, my son Andrew is 24. Elizabeth is married to a great son-in-law, and I have a granddaughter. So her name's Chloe, and she's one years old, and she's awesome. So, yeah, I mean, I basically, I have a different life path for most people. I grew up, I went to college at St. Cloud State University, I got my management degree, and I have a marketing degree. And I ended up actually in the corporate world. I ended up as the hardware buyer for Knox Lumber, if you remember Knox Lumber back in the 80s. And after that, I ended up working for Target Corporation as a senior analyst. And at the time, my father-in-law owned a dry cleaning business, and it was called New Life Cleaners. And he said, "You want to get out of the rat race and check out dry cleaning?" So I did. I actually went and I pressed pants for a year, working for him. And then after about a year, my wife and I purchased the dry cleaning operation for my father-in-law. And it was a two-store chain, and we added two stores to it. And actually, one of the stores that we had was in North Court Commons, right in Blaine. So I operated that, I did that business angle for about 11 years, and then I felt God calling me into full-time Christian ministry. So I became the pastor of, at the time, the name of the church was Kingswood Church, which is right off 109th and Highway 65. We've renamed it Hope Church in the last year. So I've been the senior pastor there now for 16 years. And I've always been somebody that's been involved in the community. And as the pastor of the church in 2002, actually, I volunteered to serve in the SBM Fire and Police Department, the chaplaincy program. So I served there for six years and served with the men and women who take care of us in the community. And that's kind of how I wet my feet in the volunteer aspect of the city. And then I've been on the planning commission now for eight years, and I've been a charter commissioner for six years. And so I've been volunteering a lot, and I just feel that, you know what? This next step, being on the city council, is an important way and a new way to serve on a different level.
If you are elected, what do you hope to accomplish? Do you have goals? Do you have ideas? What do you hope to bring to the city of Blaine?
Well, you see, a lot of people, I think, are going to come up with some goals about cutting taxes and this and that. And those are all really good, but some of those things are political in nature. And I have basically three issues that I'm really going to focus on. The first one is safety and services. Obviously, the traffic situation in Blaine, Blaine is a growing city. And so we need to talk about hiring more police officers. I drove with them. I was actually the chaplain that got all of the death calls, so to speak. So I would go along with the police officers to the homes at night and tell them mom or dad that their son or their daughter was killed in an accident or something like that. And so I believe in safety and in the services as well. And so we should be a city that's pretty proud, as far as citizens, we should be proud of our city, as far as, you know, our park dedication and even snow removal, things like that. We, you know what? We should have excellent services. I mean, we all work hard, and we pay our taxes, and so safety and services is right up there. And another issue that's near and dear to my heart is the responsiveness of city staff and city council, all right? When you call city hall, you shouldn't feel like you're interrupting their time. I mean, that's why the city government exists, is to respond to you. Or if you send an email, you should be responded back to in a fairly reasonable time. And so I believe that the responsiveness of staff and city council is very important. And I also believe, you know, one of the issues that is near and dear to my heart is an inspiring culture. Blaine is the 15th largest city in the state of Minnesota. And some projections have us cracking the top 10 real quick, and maybe someday getting into the top five. So the question is, what kind of city are we going to be? Are we going to be another large mediocre city? Or are we going to be a city of excellence? And so I believe that creating a culture that's inspiring for people, where every person, every neighborhood, every voice matters, that's the beginning of it. Because culture trumps everything. It trumps your comprehensive plan, it trumps your charter, it trumps everything. If you have a toxic culture in the city, believe you me, it's not going to matter if you cut taxes or whatever. You're just going to have people and citizens that are angry, and they don't want to be involved. And so I think by creating an inspiring culture, I think that is a way that our city will definitely grow, and it will grow into excellence, if you will.
Now, this year, Blaine has three seats on the city council, plus the mayor's seat up for election, so four different spots on the council up for election, but there's a lot more than four people running for their spots, a lot of different ideas. If you were to come out ahead and win both in the primary and then move on and win in the general election, how would you seek to build unity after what might be kind of a tough election with a lot of different ideas coming from a lot of different people that are running for these offices?
Well, that's a great question. Again, I'm a unique individual in that I have business experience, and then I also, I'm a person of faith that has served in that faith community right here in Blaine for the last 16 years. But something else, maybe you don't know, or maybe you do, or maybe some of your viewers do, is that I'm the founder and president of Hope for the Community Food Shelf, right off of 109th and Highway 65. We started it in 2010 in response to the Great Recession, and people were hungry, people didn't have jobs. And so we started this food shelf. We didn't even have coolers or freezers, so we had to put the food in snowbanks at first. And it was a lot of provision, a lot of people donated, and we've got coolers, industrial coolers and freezers. And six years later, we are the fourth-largest food shelf in the state of Minnesota. We are on pace to feed 27,000 families 1.6 million pounds of food. So the reality is this, Ben, how could I encourage and inspire people? I've always been a person that's been able to deal with people, you know, Wall Street, Church Street, Main Street, it doesn't matter, it's all about people. So I've been able to help people, encourage people from all socioeconomic levels. I have no problem dealing with a fancy millionaire like yourself, or people that need help. And so I'm a uniter, and I believe a great way to do that is getting back to listening to the people. You ever notice how people now ask questions? You're asking me questions, but you're listening to me, which I like. But most people, they ask questions, and they're listening just to respond. I want to listen to the citizens of Blaine, and I want to respond to them. And so I'm not a political animal, so to speak, but I love people. And that's what I think is the difference.
One thing that's been talked about a lot in the city of Blaine is a community center.
Yep.
What are your thoughts on the community center? Do you think it's right for the city at this time?
You know what? I'm open. I'm open to hearing more about it and kicking the tires of it and looking at it. The people that I talk to, wide-ranging opinions on it. Some people say, "Well, take a look at the people that need help with food, and they need jobs right here in Blaine, and you're talking to community center." And so they're great people on both sides of it. And again, I think it comes down to, are you willing to listen to what the people have to say about it, Ben?
Okay. I want to finish up today with just simple, why should someone vote for you?
Well, again, I believe, I'm not sure. I know one or two of the people that are running, and they're all excellent. So, I mean, I don't think Blaine's going to be in a bad situation come Election Day. And so for me, why would you vote for me? I'm a person who has been here probably the longest of all the candidates. And so I've seen Blaine grow from a kind of middle-sized, smaller type of city to a very large city today. And so I'm somebody with, that's on the streets, listening to people and working with people. And again, I have the business experience, the humanitarian heart, and I just love the city. And I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help Blaine become even a larger city, but even a more excellent city.
Well, Al, thank you for taking some time today, coming in and sharing your opinions and introducing yourself to us and to the viewers.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for watching this candidate spotlight. Remember, you can head to northmetrotv.com where you can see our complete local decision coverage. We'll have, we have candidate biographies, as well as the ability to watch more of these spotlight interviews right there on our website, northmetrotv.com. And then we'll be bringing you election results, both on primary night and on the general election night in November. Thank you for watching. Thank you for joining us for this Local Decision 2016 Candidate Spotlight. I'm sitting down with Andy Jarvis, who is running for Blaine City Council in Ward Three, and it is the primary election taking place on August 9th for this open seat that Blaine has this year. Andy, first of all, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Ben.
And I want to start with just giving you a chance to introduce yourself to the viewers and to the voters, and then also explain to us why you decided to run for this seat.
Thank you. My name's Andy Jarvis. I live in Ward Three in Blaine, Minnesota. I live in Blaine with my wife, Crystal, and son Vincent. And I decided to run for city council when I saw that Russ Herbst was not running for reelection. My son was born this year in April of 2015, and I really decided that I want to be part of, active in the community, of making changes and really forming our community for my son to grow up in.
All right. So if you're elected, what do you hope to accomplish? What goals would you have in office?
So there's a couple of things that are high on my list. One of the things that are top is smart growth. Blaine really does not have a lot of undeveloped land left, and the land that we do have, we need to be smart about how we're developing it. For example, the extension of Conery Road 14, 125th Avenue, right now, it's underway to go from a one-lane to a two-lane road, but there's 300, approximately 300 meters left where they could have made it a two-lane all the way to Lexington Avenue. So that's, you know, a smart growth would have been to make that entire stretch a two-lane instead of that short segment being one lane. That leads into my second thing, which is traffic safety. When you have that one-lane stretch of road, people are going to be pushed onto side streets, just like they have been in other neighborhoods. Traffic safety in our communities is extremely important to me. We have many new homes and developments that are underway, more families are moving in, and our children are going to be playing in our yards, you know, in the streets, going to neighborhood parks. And so it's important for us to be smart about how we're planning our growth and our arterial roads, so that vehicle traffic isn't dangerous to our children. Another thing that's important to me is our police and fire departments. On the military side, I'm still in the Army Reserves, and I'm the Minnesota Emergency Preparedness Liaison Officer, NCO for the state of Minnesota. So our main mission is to coordinate any DOD federal military response that would be required in the state of Minnesota and in FEMA Region Five. So we record, we look really closely with FEMA Region Five, based out of Chicago. And one of the things that I'm a big proponent of is our local communities, policemen and firefighters to be ICS-qualified. ICS is Incident Command System. And what that does is it gives our officers and firemen opportunities to, when in an event, if there's a major emergency or natural disaster, that they can respond according to the incident command structure, which would be required to efficiently save lives, buildings, and infrastructure. So a proponent to that, you know, getting our police and firemen ICS-qualified if they're not already, and also increasing the amount of police and firemen that we have on staff. Blaine is, I believe, one of the 10th-largest metro area in Minnesota, and we continue to grow. So we need to focus on community policing and really protect our communities.
In the area of growth, in those still undeveloped areas of Blaine, aside from the open space that'll be left, are there things that you would like to see come to the city, knowing that you can't always pick and choose the growth that comes your way? But are there things, as a city council person, that you would look for?
That's a great question. One of the things that I'm really in favor of is targeting our growth. So talking to the citizens in Blaine and asking them what they want. I know it is hard to bring specific stores or amenities to an area, but you can at least try. Because I think one of the biggest things about Blaine is that not every single business knows about Blaine. They don't realize that Blaine is a thriving community, and we're growing every single day. They don't realize that we have thousands of new households every year. So one of the things that I would like to see is a little more development along Lexington Avenue. Maybe another gas station along Lexington Avenue, something like a quick trip, that'd be really convenient for the commuters that are coming on Lexington Avenue and linking up with 35W. Another thing I'd be a proponent of is a grocery store like a Whole Foods. We don't have a lot of options like Whole Foods or Trader Joe's in our area, but similar communities like Woodbury and Maple Grove and Edina, they have those same options. So I'd like to see one of those in our communities.
With this being an open seat and four different people vying for, just to get past the primary election and get a chance in the general election, how would you work to represent the whole district, not just the people that support you, and bring some unity after what might be kind of a tough election?
That's a great question. One of the things that makes Blaine great is our entire community, not just Ward Three or Ward One or Ward Two. Blaine as a whole is great. When my wife and I decided to move to Blaine, we were looking at a bunch of different communities, Woodbury, Maple Grove, Edina, and we looked at Blaine, too. When we came to Blaine, we fell in love with Blaine, not only for what Blaine is, but what the potential Blaine has to be. So I think it's important that we work together. I believe I have a great history of working together. Being in the military, we always focused on being, working as a team and getting the mission done. A platoon or a company doesn't work as a single entity in its best interest. We work for what's in the best interests of the Army and the military as a whole. So I think it's important to look at our old, you know, Ward Three is a newer ward, so to speak. A lot of the new development is in Ward Three, and you have a lot of older development in Ward One. It's important to realize that that infrastructure needs to be replaced. So although we may spend more taxpayer dollars in Ward One on replacing infrastructure, it benefits the city as a whole, because it, you know, incentivizes people to continue to move to Blaine, even into these older areas.
Blaine is looking at the possibility of bringing in and building a community center in the city, and there's, the final plans aren't there yet, the exact language of a proposed referendum isn't there yet. But from what you know at this point, do you think it's time for a community center in the city of Blaine?
I think it's time to have a large discussion on a community center in Blaine. I like the idea of a community center in Blaine, but I don't necessarily like how things have transpired so far in the development and talks of this community center. Blaine is growing, and we have all sorts of new families in the community. But one of the things I've noticed that hasn't happened is there hasn't been a large dissemination of information about the community center. You know, I know plans aren't final, but there was plans to have a senior center hangout area in the new community center, even though the senior citizens don't necessarily want to travel on the busier roads and be in that location. The surveys that were sent out, there was people that got duplicate surveys, and I believe it was only sent out to a small fraction of the city. So I wholeheartedly support a larger discussion and a community forum to ask our citizens if they want a community center, and if they do, what amenities would they like to see? But we need to be honest with them and let them know, how much is that community center going to cost us? Because it's not only going to increase your property tax levy, it's going to cost you money to have a membership. And I think similar community centers have been operated by YMCA, so we're looking at anywhere from $60 to $80 for a membership. You know, those are things that our community or citizens should know before they vote yes to build this.
If you were elected, how would you communicate with your constituents? How would you make sure that those lines remain open?
I think social media is a big one. You know, we have a lot of younger generation families moving into Blaine, and social media connects everybody. Even myself, I have, I'm part of a Facebook group, I have, and two other apps on my phone that connect my neighborhood. And on there, we discuss neighborhood things, you know, topics or neighborhood reading groups for children, things like that. So I think that's the biggest way that we can communicate with our citizens and get real-time feedback, is using social media like Facebook, Twitter, things of that nature.
Finally, just, why should someone vote for you?
I believe the citizens of Blaine should vote for me, because I have a track record of being a bulldog in advocacy. I will fight to have your voice heard, and I won't give up. I will be your advocate on the seat for Blaine City Council, and I will listen to you.
Well, Andy, thank you very much for coming in tonight, sharing some of your views and opinions with us. Thank you, I appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Ben.
I want to remind you, you can all head to northmetrotv.com where we have our complete local decision coverage. It's all on there for you. Make sure, just look for the local decision tab on the homepage, and you can find it, everything you need to know about the local races for both the primary and then moving on through the general election. I've been your host, Ben Hale. Thank you for watching. Thank you for watching.